Good evening, everyone. The time is now seven oh four P M. And I would like to call order the November sixth, twenty twenty four, parent and community advisory council meeting. The purpose of this meeting is for the committee to discuss what we hope to accomplish as an advisory council. This meeting is being recorded and will be posted on the P G C P S board webpage for the public to review. Ms. Barton, can you please call the roll?
Absolutely. Good evening, everyone. Mashira Durden.
Present.
Latanza Wilson. Haylen Laveau Carreras. Christopher Smith.
Good day, present.
Akeembra Lawrence.
Present.
Josada Hinton. Shadé Davis. I I must hear a verb, a verbal. Ms. Davis, I see your hand.
Is it okay if I say that in Spanish as well?
Yes, one second. Go ahead. Talala.
Para los padres cuando les están llamando por sus nombres, por favor, si pueden verbalmente hablar que están presente o que están aquí, por favor, para cuando les llamen el nombre.
Thank you. Ms. Shadé Davis. Dr. Sheila Jackson.
Present.
Ms. Robin Welsh. Ms. Rebecca Brown. Ms. Rebecca Brown.
Yes, can you hear me? I'm here, present.
Great, thank you. Ms. Carla Lundie.
Present.
Mr. Reese Holden. Dr. Evelina Higgins. Ms. Teresa Smith.
Present.
Mr. Lawrence Milhouse.
Present.
I have nine present.
We have a quorum, thank you. All right, guys, so we're gonna jump right into it. Thank you all for being present and engaged with the meeting this evening. I am Teresa Smith, Chair of the Parent and Community Advisory Council. I am also the representative for District Six. We are now into month three of school year, and I hope that you all, as well as your scholars, are doing well. For me personally, I am witnessing that it's not easy being a female leader while also having to maintain just being you. So I would like to open up with a quote this evening that I think is fitting. And it is, "To fight for the things that you care about, but do it in a way that will lead others to join you." This is a quote from Ruth Bader Ginsburg. So consider this as we embark this journey to do the work of the council. I also see that we have some new faces this evening. There will be an opportunity later in the agenda for introductions when we do our roundtable from each district. The next agenda item is the adoption of the meeting agenda. Are there any objections to adopting the November sixth, twenty twenty four agenda? Here are none. The meeting agenda is approved. Item one point five, approval of meeting minutes. Are there any objections to approving the minutes from the October second, twenty twenty four meeting? Here are none. The meeting minutes are approved. All right, item one point six, report of the P C A C chair. So on October second, sixteenth, and October thirtieth, I attended the, I attended meetings with the twenty twenty five, twenty six school year calendar committee. We are still in a discussion phase where all the stakeholders are sharing their thoughts about how the calendar should be arranged for next school year. Therefore, I don't have any decisions to report out at this point. What just happened to my notes here? All right, on October fourteenth, I attended the quarterly conversation for parent leaders that was hosted by the Department of Family and School Partnerships. It was a great opportunity to connect with other parent leaders from across the district, as well as hear some of the priorities from our superintendent. Vice Chair Mailhouse and myself have recommended that a subsequent session is held specifically with the superintendent so that there's an opportunity to engage in conversations on key topics. And it does appear that our leadership was receptive to this. So hopefully, uh, there'd be a future date for the parent leaders to have conversations with the superintendent. On October fourteenth, I attended a meeting with the Community Schools District Steering Committee for school year twenty five. This meeting was more so an opportunity for me to get engaged with the expectations and learn about the findings from the needs assessment that, uh, that occurred from cohort five. The key items that I took away were food security, translation and legal services for our foreign families, mental and behavior health needs, as well as, um, helping caregivers with parenting skills. The committee is now programmed specifically for food insecurity and mental and behavior health from funds from a grant that is a little over eleven thousand. This Friday, I will be attending the twenty twenty five Legislative Day with the district. For those that are not aware, P G C P S has a legislative day, and it's an event where we engage with the elective officials on legislation that affects the school system. The twenty twenty five legislative platform is now available. And it's quite an informative brief, so I encourage you all to take a look at it. I will be sharing the P G C P S Legislative Two Kit that was recently released, and it includes the platform document along with other resources to help us with our advocacy efforts. And then my last item to report out. P C A C will be attending the fifth annual P G C P S Family Institute Conference. That is being held on the November ninth. Vice Chair Mailhouse and myself will be leading a session on parent engagement. And we do hope that you all have already connected with your districts or within your districts to encourage participation at this event. This concludes the chair's report. Are there any questions? Ms. Lundie?
Hi, thank you so much. Um, I know it's getting my attention. What, I have two comments. What day is the, uh, I don't think you mentioned on your report for the Legislative Day? What day was?
Oh, I'm sorry, I did not mention it.
That's okay.
It's this Friday, um, November eighth.
And where is it again?
I didn't, I actually didn't listen.
It's nine, nine to eleven A M. at Ellen Ochoa Middle School.
Thank you, Ms. Jackson, Dr. Jackson.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Jackson. And my next thing, uh, my next comment is, um, oh, I'm sorry for the public. Hi, good evening. My name is Carla Lundie, and I am the, um, newly appointed, um, civic and, um, community representative for P C A. Um, my question is, in these meetings that you have attended, do you have any, um, takeaways for the community representatives? And if so, do you plan with meeting with us?
So yes, we do want to have meetings with P C A. What has been our delay is the formation of this entire council. So as of today, it appears that we are at that point. Um, but of course, some of these subcommittee meetings had to keep, you know, the, the meetings had to occur, so, um, P C A presence had to be there. Um, so I'm going to get with Vice Chair Mailhouse to see, one, do we have to have a public meeting in order to meet with you all um, outside of this meeting? I think it depends on the number of participants, but I gotta get some, some clarity there. Uh, but to your question, yes, we do plan to engage with the rest of the council as it relates to other meetings that P C A is invited to.
Okay, so to follow up to that, I probably wasn't clear. I'm, I'm specifically talking about, um, with regarding Robert rules of order. Yeah, you can meet with us individually, so the community reps, like the faith, the business, and myself, um, given these meetings that you have attended yourself as the chair. I just wanted to know, do you have any takeaways for us? Um, does faith, community, the business, the civic that you would like to share with us maybe offline so we can know how we could better, um, you know, represent on this council? That's what I was talking about.
Okay. So the an, the answer would be yes, however, I don't. I'm sorry, did I cut you off? Oh, we're good. Okay, so yeah, the answer is yes. Um, but I don't have specific information tonight to report out how it's applicable to each group.
All right, thank you. That's all I have, Chair.
Thank you. Are there any other questions? All right, here are none. We will now have the report of the Superintendent Desneys. The chair recognizes Dr. Jackson.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Uh, for those of you I don't know yet, uh, I'm Dr. Sheila Jackson. I'm Director of our Department of Family and Community Partnerships. And I have shared with Ms. Burton, Ms. Barton, I'm sorry, Muriel, Ms. Barton, uh, some slides that just to capture the content that I wanted to share with you all tonight. Just a quick overview of some of the things that are happening from our department and from the Division of Communications. And I guess, Muriel, if you'll click, I'll just follow right along. Thank you. So one of the things that is really important, uh, in our reorganization of our Division of Communications is that every month we publish and we publicize what are key systemic initiatives. And so for the enough, month of November, one of the most important things is that this is actually National Family Engagement Month. So you should be seeing things published on our website, seeing activities in our schools across the district. A proclamation was approved by our Board of Education and our superintendent announcing the importance of National Family Engagement Month. And, uh, Ms. Barton, I will, I will actually download those proclamations and make sure that P C A members get them. Um, but we also focused on, uh, elections and voting. Uh, and so there were stories on the website, uh, interviews about, uh, so, uh, special, social studies classes, uh, where students have been learning a lot about elections and voting. And so that was a very insightful opportunity for us as adults to see what our children are learning. Um, this week is, has been recognized by our district as what we call P E A Appreciation Week. That's for our parent engagement assistance. Uh, we act, we love to make sure that, um, everyone who does special work, especially in the area of increasing family engagement, is recognized. And so that was a proclamation also that was, uh, approved and published by the Board of Education. And this week also is what we call P E A Recognition Day. So on that day tomorrow, uh, our P E As typically come to our office for a monthly meeting. But on this day, uh, they will have a special recognition. The superintendent will join them in the morning. Uh, we have special guests from the system to just encourage them to keep doing the work that they do. Uh, they are an invaluable tool, uh, for promoting family engagement across our district. Uh, also, the, uh, tomorrow is the Ella, Ella Ochoa, uh, Middle School Ribbon Cutting. So if you're available to go to that, those are typically like about nine o'clock in the morning. Uh, but it's a wonderful opportunity to just learn about the construction of our new schools, the partners who are involved, and hear messages from students and school staff and parents as well. Um, tomorrow, uh, tomorrow night, uh, we have a specialty programs showcase that's happening, but the application, uh, process opens. Um, and the lottery system actually has opened on November first. So if you need more information about that, please reach out to me, or you can reach out to Division of Academics to get more information about the different specialty programs whose application process is open right now. And as our chair said, we have our Families Do Conference this Saturday. We're so excited. We have close to six hundred people registered. Uh, we are past our limit in childcare. Uh, we had said a hundred, we're up to about a hundred and fifty, but we're so excited. We, we don't want to turn anybody away. Um, and so we're just looking forward to that great event. We have a national, nationally renowned speaker, our superintendent, our board chair will be there to bring greetings. Uh, and you all will truly enjoy it. It's a great time to network with other parents, our parent leaders, uh, and to, you know, just partake in a wonderful day of fellowship for our parent community. Uh, and then the other things are, in the slideshow, you all will have a copy of the slideshow. If you're good, and click to the next one, please, Muriel, because I don't want to take up Robin's time too. Uh, and this is just a list of things that are happening in the month of November that are being highlighted, promoted by the school system, and you can click on the next one. And of course, this is about Saturday, so we're, uh, very excited. Uh, we're providing transportation from three different locations for parents to get on the bus and come to Oxon Hill High School. Again, free childcare, free breakfast, free lunch. I will have interpretation and, uh, available. Our materials will be translated. And so we welcome you. It is not too late. If anyone would still like to attend, the link is still, uh, come on the website, but if you haven't been able to access that link, please email me at lorkeyssjackson@pgcps.org. Next slide, I think it's my last. Oh, gosh, tomorrow night. I, I'm sorry, I'm, I'm trying to go too fast. We have a Family Institute session, a virtual session online for parents. And this one is gonna be led by a principal who wants to talk with the community about what schools do and need to do better to make sure that we effectively engage parents as our partners. So, uh, I invite you all to join us for that. Um, you will enjoy it. It's a delightful, uh, principal who has had a lot of experience in a very diverse community, learning how to engage families. And then those are the rest of the ones for this semester, and we'll be sharing a new calendar for the spring, uh, after, um, after Thanksgiving. Next. Oh, and I'm just gonna do a quick shout out. My staff and I, uh, presented at a national conference back in October. We did two sessions. One, I did based, uh, I did research about what's happening in Prince George's County. I called it Boots on the Ground. Who are the frontline people who help us build family engagement in our system? So we did that session. It was well received. And then we did a special session that my team and I created. It's called What's in a Town? And it's a very, um, it's a simulation that gets people to feel what it is like to be in communities that have, uh, varying degrees of resources. And so we've been doing that with schools in our system, with principals. Uh, we'll be doing it with system teams as well. And if we're ever together, we can do it to, with P C A in person as well. And so I think that's all, uh, of course, our volunteer coordinators have been trained for every school, and we continue to make sure that any family or parent that wants to volunteer has access and an easy access to make that happen. As a matter of fact, Saturday, we'll have a session and we'll have, um, fingerprinting there for parents who are interested in being a volunteer. So any questions for me?
Thank you, Dr. Jackson, here are none.
Well, I have a question. I'm sorry. I forgot to raise my hand.
No problem.
I loved your report, Dr. Jackson. Um, with respect to the fingerprinting available, was that on your, is that on your flyer? Because I would definitely would like to share that.
Well, it's closed at this point because there was a cutoff of the way our fingerprinting works. Yeah, they had to have prior notice. I had to pay them in advance. I'm sorry, I shouldn't have said it like that, but, but we did, we have to, we definitely had to pre-register people for that. So it's closed for Saturday. However, um, I can share additional information, or maybe Robin may have better information than me.
No, well, okay, well, and follow up, that's good. So in the future, will you be doing this again, you think? And I think that fingerprint is very good, especially for parents and people who are interested in community stakeholders who want to volunteer in the different schools, grandparents and, and folks like that. That is excellent. So I just wanted to do that. So you're gonna do this again as far as, um, offering the, um, opportunities for parents and stakeholders to be fingerprinted?
Absolutely, absolutely.
That would be good. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, Ms. Lundie. Ms. Wilson?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. Um, I just wanted to go back really quickly. There was, um, I heard about the ribbon, uh, ribbon cutting that's on tomorrow, but I didn't hear what the time was.
It's nine A M., nine to eleven A M. At Ellen Ochoa.
All right, and I think the other question, I think you answered it as well. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Wilson. Are there any other questions from it, for Dr. Jackson?
I see Ms. Brown's hand. No, I don't, Ms. Brown. I'm sorry. That was my cursor on the screen. I do apologize for that.
Dr. Jackson, I'm like, where are you looking? Oh, Ms. Wilson.
Sorry, I found my other, uh, question. The, uh, link for the registration for, uh, tomorrow evening's, uh, event, um, there was a period it after the, like, in between the link tree. Was that period supposed to be there, or was that, um, by accident? It was H T T S, uh, semicolon, forward slash, forward slash, link T R, period, E E.
Um, there should not be a period there. I will send it to you. I'll send you the link for that.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you. Any other questions? All right, here are none. The chair now recognizes Ms. Welsh.
Good evening. Good evening, everyone. Um, I do want to, um, respond to, um, to, um, um, uh, Dr. Jackson's, uh, uh, reference over to volunteering volunteers and fingerprinting process. And as you know, that there is a, a volunteer registration and application page on the webpage. And so when volunteers are, um, uh, wanting to volunteer, the first thing they do is they get online and fill out the application, which is takes just a couple of minutes. And then from there, they get their fingerprinting and their, and their, uh, CPS check, which we do have a, um, a, a place at Sasser. And then I'll have to find for you the, uh, locations, because the fingerprinting office actually holds onto the, has that list of, uh, locations. There are two other locations in the county. They can be fingerprinted. And then there's a training requirement through safe schools. And once that's done, we actually do track all our volunteers to make sure they have been fingerprinted, went through CPS clearance, and have received their training. Um, and so the process is pretty seamless. Um, and, um, does this, does Zoom have a chat in it? It does, doesn't it?
Not in our meeting.
This one, yeah, this one does not. Oh, because I was gonna say I could send you, um, send you the, actually, uh, the link to where the application is, the volunteer application is, so that, um, anyone that you know that wants to volunteer, they, they can go ahead and they can, you know, volunteer by filling out the application. That gets them started. And then there's all this information that now gives them the information of what the next steps are, what to do, location of fingerprinting offices, things like that. So, um, I will. Yes.
This is, um, Mrs. Barton. You can send it to me, and then I'll send it out to all of the P C A representatives.
Oh, okay, thank you. I will send that to you as soon as I finish reporting it. I'll send it to you. Thank you. So, um, so anyway, for my report, so, um, there, the, um, the, the conversation about the legislative platform. So I, they, we just finalized the platform. It was actually voted on by the Board of Educat, first by the Republican Governance Committee last, um, on October, uh, twenty second. And then at the October twenty fourth Board of Education meeting, the, the board members voted on it and approved it. So the platform, and we can just go through the pages, it's, the first part is just sort of informational information um, in terms of how we for, developed the platform, who worked together with it. And then if you proceed, I think the important piece, and then this is about, uh, my office, the government relations. But then if you go into, what we've done is, we have, within the platform, there's four major priorities that the board voted on, and one is the implementation of the blueprint. And I, and actually, I did share a lot of this with you previously when it was sort of in draft form. But it does tell you, um, this tells you that we're, you know, that this is important to us, but that we need to have advanced notice on. Like, a lot of times, the, through the, um, M S D E, um, and the O A B, they will come in, they'll say, you have to do this, this, and this, but they don't give us the guidance until it's right when, uh, that we're supposed to meet the deadline. So this talks about the having legislation that gives us adequate time to complete the work, the requirements that are required of us, as well as sufficient funding. And although we received a lot of blueprint money over the past years, the, the requirements are pretty strenuous, and so we are really still in need of additional funding to be able to meet all the requirements. So we have that one as a major priority. And then if you go to the next page, Ms. Barton, um, I should just click over to the next page. There you go. School safety and security is very important. Uh, the superintendent in, um, one of the last board meetings talked about that school safety is one of his highest priorities. And there has been, um, a lot of money that has been funneled into security enhancement devices in the schools. Um, and they're looking at many other, um, ways to make the schools a little more secure and more safe. Um, we do take advantage, the school system does take advantage of the, um, Safe to Learn Act grants that come through. Um, and, uh, we continue to do that, but we really need a, a lot more funding. A, a good example is our schools have cameras in them, which are really important. There's surveillance cameras. And, um, and schools, you know, the cameras break, they need to be replaced. We need additional cameras in the schools. We now have new buildings. They need cameras, those kinds of things. So there's ongoing needs for funding, uh, for, in order to keep our schools safe and secure. Then the next priority is, um, you'll go to the next page, is construction and facilities. And our buildings, over half of our buildings are, uh, forty years old, uh, at least forty years old. And so we're dealing all the time in all these, um, like, like H, HVAC issues, plumbing issues, um, just loads of issues related to these buildings that are just very, very old and need continual, um, repair and, uh, you know, upkeep to be able to make them functional. And this last, and this last year, they, uh, the, the, um, school system asked for about seventy-two million in funding. And of course, we only received eighteen million. So that is pretty difficult when you consider how many schools that we have that are so old. And, you know, it's no fun to, to try to learn or try to work in an environment where it's, you know, the, the air quality isn't great. There's, the, there's issues with heating and air conditioning. There's issues with, you know, the, the water, the plumbing, those kinds of things. So that is a critical place where we really need additional funding, so that will be a priority for this upcoming year. And then the last major priority, if you go to the next page, Ms. Barton, has to do with the immunizations for students new to the United States. So we had, um, we had approximately, so when they talk about newcomers, newcomers are students um, that, that are in grades pre K to twelve, and they're born outside the United States and have recently arrived in the country and are now new to Prince George's County Public School. And this past year, we had about four hundred thousand, not four hundred thousand, four thousand newcomers, uh, students that, uh, arrived. And due to a variety of challenges that these, the families of these students faced, they weren't able to get their immunizations in time. And the law, the, the, excuse me, I'm sorry. The law. Stop. Hold on a second. There. The law actually says that when a student, so for immunizations, if you, like, school's about to start, you as a you as a parent get an appointment for your child to get, to get their vaccines and everything. And, but it's not, it's, as long as you are, you know, within twenty days. So you can attend school for the first twenty days, as long as you have an appointment to get your, to get the child, receive immunizations within those first twenty days. They're looking at calendar days. Then the student can attend school. Well, many of our students, they weren't able to get their immunizations within that first twenty days. And so they couldn't, they, first of all, they couldn't even attend school because by law, they're not allowed to. Um, if, eh, after that point, if they haven't had their immunizations. So they weren't allowed to be in school. As well as much of our funding is, um, per pupil funding. And so by not having that adequate funding, we did, we had a pretty significant loss of millions of dollars of loss in financial aid. Just because our students did not have immu- immu- immunizations. And we do do a tremendous amount of work. Um, the school system does to try to, um, make available immunizations. Our health clinics provide it. Our nurses are involved with it. We work closely with the health department. They do a lot of advertising to, just so parents are aware of where they can get, uh, their child, the immunizations. But even with all that, there's just, we're parents that just weren't able to get those immunizations in time. So it's a loss everywhere. You know, the students don't have the opportunity to be in school, which is in the long run, very bad, because if, eh, there's lots of research out there that shows if his child doesn't attend school, especially misses, like, the beginning parts of it, that, that makes it harder for them to catch up and oftentimes has impact for them later on when they're attending school. And then, of course, uh, our system truly does need as much financial aid as it can receive. So then we'd lose that funding for this, for each student. And that's, that's problematic then for all of our students in terms of what we can provide them. So those were the major four priorities that we identified. But then, if you go through the document, and I'm not going to spend, I could be here talking all night too, so I'll just let you know. But I think, uh, Ms. Barton, weren't you going to post it on the agenda so they could, they could, um, or they, or you'll send it to them so they could access it, the link or whatever? Um, then they can look at it for themselves. But anyways, then it, so then just the other ongoing priorities are local school board autonomy, recruitment and retention of staff, uh, curriculum and accountability, funding for success, and that's funding in a wide variety of areas. Um, the MSD literacy policy, student welfare, which has a lot to do with, um, you know, uh, rest, uh, providing restorative approaches and training for parents and students related to prevention of drug addiction. And, you know, professional services like, uh, mental health clinicians, school psychologists, addi- addiction counselors to help students. So that's another priority. And then special education services, that's for, um, to, uh, continue. We support, you know, significant increases in funding for high-quality special ed services. And the, also for the, the share, the state share of non-public placements, their cost to increase to support the school system. And then any type of incentives that, uh, that can help us attract hi- highly qualified special education teachers and related service providers and support personnel, because eh, we have a shortage of teachers in general, but it, eh, it has been, and even years past, before we had a shortage in all teachers, there's always been a shortage for special education teachers. So any way we can get highly qualified special education teachers, you know, we're, you know, we're very open to this, you know, any, um, any legislation that would support that. And then we have something on information technology that really has to do with, um, um, eh, a, artificial intelligence, as well as, um, as well as, um, uh, what else? Let's see. Uh, just the whole, the, we, the accessibility. So school systems are required to provide, make sure that anything we put on the web or anything we offer digitally is accessible for all students and especially for students with disabilities. And so they, we are thinking, our IT office feels strongly that if the state could help us, eh, help, help provide, um, the companies and stuff that we could contract with that could actually assess how well we're doing on our accessibility, eh, that would be extremely helpful. So we have language like that. And then, um, the, uh, legislative drafting, uh, are that, we, what happens every year, they pass the, they, they, the bills get through the, the session. They get to the governor, the governor signs them in May, and the bills usually say, on July one, you're supposed to start implementing this. Well, the problem is, is that most, a lot of these are unfunded mandates, and our budget does not reflect the need for these different things. And so that causes us to have to, a lot of times, you know, switch things around, uh, take money away from things that we thought were a priority so that we can meet the unfunded mandates. Um, and also just operationally trying to meet the requirements in time where you only have at the most maybe a month and a half turnaround to be able to do that. And so we're requesting that, that if you, if something passes, like, say, eh, passes like in, in May, that not July one of that year, there would be July one of the following year, that would give us the time to be able to, um, um, you know, be able to implement the, the bills. And then federal support of public education, um, for federal mandate, you know, federal funding and not, um, give it any mandate that comes down federally that it's fully funded. And the ongoing battle, so from the minute idea was, um, uh, the Individual Disability Education Act, from the minute that was implemented, they, they never fully funded what they promised. They never honored their commitment to, to provide the funding that they were saying they would provide. So that's another thing that we're advocating for is the full funding of that. So, um, that was that one. And then charter schools in terms of local board autonomy and t- as terms of granting the charter, reviewing the charter application, um, and making sure that charter schools are held to the same standards as the public schools are. So that is sort of it in the nutshell, uh, as far as the legislative platform. And, um, there was reference earlier tonight regarding the legislative coo- toolkit, which I know is going to be shared, I think, early, later on. But on the, on the next, eh, it's like, the next to last page of the document, there is a QR code that will connect you right to the legislative toolkit. And so, um, and that's extremely helpful. Has a lot of resources, especially if you're interested in advocating. In the next General Assembly, they even give you sample letters that you can, um, really, you know, alter and change to make, meet your needs. But it gives you some idea of the things that should be included. So, um, I think that's, that's it as far as the legislative platform. And then, and, and so the purpose of Legislative Day, one of the big purposes is to share the platform. It's coming out. So the whole idea is to make sure that all the legislators know what are the important things for Prince George's County Public Schools. So that will be a focus for Legislative Day. And then the only other thing I wanted to share is that at the October board meeting, um, the policy on off, uh, school board officers, which talks about the role of the chair of the board, the vice chair of the board, and the executive officer, which is the superintendent of the board, their roles, that is out for public comment right now. So, um, so which it gives you the opportunity to, um, provide comment. Um, and let me just see if there's anything else. I know I'm talking a lot, so I don't mean to keep talking, but, um, I think I have one more thing I wanted to share. Yes. So the other thing, just to let you know, is that, and that we have a, a policy and governance meeting coming up on Tuesday evening. And at that, that, which is next week, the twelfth. And at that meeting, we will be discussing, um, the following policies. There, there will be, um, we are adding a new policy which has to do with the, um, possession and use of alcohol, um, tobacco and drugs on school grounds. And then a policy on developing curriculum documents for instructional programs in elementary and secondary schools. Those will be new policies. And then the purchasing policy is coming back up for, for discussion. And then a policy on automated external, um, uh, defibrillators, because a bill was passed last year during the session that, uh, provides some additional requirements in the use of, um, AEDs. And so we want to make sure that we have the, um, that we, we, that policy is ref- reflects that new change in the law. Um, and then evaluating the superintendent of schools, it will be up for a discussion for the first, um, for the first time, um, what, we discussed it last time, we're bringing it back for discussion. So those will be discussion items, um, at, at the, um, policy meeting this next, next Tuesday. And are there any questions? I'm sorry, there was a lot. I don't mean to talk too fast, but.
A lot of good information. Ms. Barton, I know your hand was up from before, so did you have anything additional?
No, I was right in the middle of the presentation, so I hadn't lowered it yet.
Okay, great. Thank you. Ms. Lundy?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Ms. Welch, as always, a wealth of information. Um, so I want to go back to, um, legislative priority number four with respect to immunization for students, um, new, pre-K to twelve. So I was, I have a couple of things. I was wondering, is there a list of schools, um, by district where there are or have been immunizations concerns? And this, is this a list that we have? That's my first question.
Um, that I do not know. I'd have to look into that for you. Uh, the I, the, um, um, Office of Accountability, which has student enrollment under it, that, that department. And so they're tracking enrollment all the time. Uh, they are the ones that, um, you know, basically gathered all this data. So I would have to ask them if there's a list of, of, uh, schools that would have that specific information.
Okay, and, and, um, part two of this, given what you just said, so today, three months in, have all of our students been immunized, immunized, what's that word? Have received immunization? Have they got immunized, notized? I'm sorry, I can't pronounce the word right now.
I will have to check on that also. I don't, I, actually, I know for a fact they all haven't, because, uh, a parent did email me not that long ago and asked, uh, asked questions about it. And was it, it was this, actually, a parent of a student with a disability was asking for resources, um, for, um, places for where she could get immunizations. And so the special.
Thank you.
Office provided me information I could share with her. So no, eh, would, if we just have one parent telling me that, then there's probably other parents out there, right?
Right. Okay, so that's the, please, that's important. And my, um, reason for asking this is because, and this is my, um, final comment, is because, um, given my role with PCAC, getting the word out to parents and guardians that can be shared with our Board of Education members. I do know that our local municipalities, as well as a lot of our legislators, they sponsor and hold events, excuse me, in the community where they give out free immunization. And so I was just thinking, um, to myself, is there a direct point of contact for PCAC within the administration that we could reach out to with any, um, immunization resources? And you said it's the Office of Accountability?
Well, so they are the ones that count everything, but the office that's actually responsible, the department or the division that's responsible for, um, really, um, share, they're the ones that do all the advertising and set up, uh, immunization clinics would be Student Services.
Okay, thank you.
Um, Dr. Elizabeth Faison is the Associate Superintendent of that, uh, department.
Thank you. That's been very helpful. Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Ms. Welch.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Are there any other questions? All right, here in none. We will move on to our next agenda item, which is, um, unfinished business and any announcements from the districts. So I would actually like to use this time for, um, to do like a roundtable, since we have new members and allow everyone to introduce themselves. And if you have any updates from your respective districts, feel free to share that information as well. So we'll start with, um, District One, and then we'll just proceed in order.
Ms. Durden? I don't believe, yeah, I don't think I have anything to, um, to report on this week, but I did have a question about the, uh, the calendar. Um, working group that you're in, is there a way for us, uh, to have input on, on that? Because I know my school specifically, the calendar this year was a huge deal. So I definitely would like to.
Sure, you and I can connect. Um, and I'll make sure that I share any information that you wish to share with the committee.
Okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm. Would you like to introduce yourself, since we have new, new members here tonight?
My apologies. My name is Mashara Durden, and I am the District, uh, the representative for District One.
Thank you. Ms. Wilson?
Hello, all. My name is Latanza Wilson. I am the District Two Representative. And I can say that I am for sure finally got a response back today that I am, um, still the District Two, uh, Representative. I don't have anything, um, specific, uh, to bring back, because obviously about two meetings ago, we had to get a lot of clarity as it pertained to, you know, the policy, um, things of that nature. And so I was finally able to get, um, clarification on that. So hence, I am back, um, been waiting on that information. So thank you all so much. I am obviously trying to catch up, um, on what's been going on, so that I can go ahead and start connecting back with, uh, those in District Two, as well as my Board of Education members.
Thank you for that update, Ms. Wilson. Um, and by all means, all of our meeting minutes are posted, but if you have any questions, feel free to, to reach out.
Not a problem. I did get a chance to see the, uh, the last, uh, you know, of it, uh, on YouTube. So if I'm not able to catch it one way, I'm always able to catch it another.
Awesome. Um, I actually, I'm not sure if the District Three rep, Ms. Halen, if she's present, I didn't catch her for roll call. Okay, um, District Four, Mr. Smith?
Good evening. My name is, uh, Chris Smith here, a new member. So I hope you guys, uh, a pleasure to meet all of you guys virtually and looking forward to being a good member standing with you guys. Um, I have a scholar here at, uh, Char- Charles Herbert Flowers High School, and also have children at, uh, Kingsbury Elementary School. Uh, so got two journeys going on here, if you guys see. One item, uh, did just some outreach on, uh, uh, wanted to kind of get your support on, was trying to figure out, um, some schools, my schooling of it, elementary level, and also other schools not getting their test or quizzes back with district assessments. Um, and I did some outreach on it. It appears to be inconsistently given out, where some people are given test or quizzes back in it, like the assessments, like a milestones, a form of checkpoints, for reading in math. Um, and I got an inconsistent guidance at the county level on it, in terms of it. Um, so that is something I think, is, is we all know how important assessments are to our students' grade. Um, not giving those assessments back, the graded ones, not the benchmarks or standardized testing, refer to the ones that are actually graded. Um, to me puts, uh, uh, puts our scholars at risk of us not being able to, one, make sure to get positive feedback on the graded materials. And, uh, secondly, make sure that is, um, make sure that grading gets accurate and make sure to get that positive feedback. So if they're not coming back home, that, that to me is a challenging issue. And I signed the, um, and I reached out to the district level, there's an instructional director on it. They're signing the policy that appears to be given around, um, standardized testing for the reason not doing, oh, not giving it back. Um, but I think that's something to pull a thread on, much longer, to maybe a bigger issue that we're just not quite aware of, because it's not been properly broadcast out to parents that there was a change in practice about giving those, um, assessments back.
Mr. Smith, I want to make sure that I understand. So it's the assessments that's given at the classroom level? Is that what's in question versus stand, results from a standardized test?
Correct. The graded curriculum assessments, yes.
Um, Ms. Welch, do you have any, any comment there?
No, I would have to look, look into that for you.
Okay, okay. Well, Mr. Smith, thank you for.
I can add information since I'm the teacher. Uh, so, uh, math and is, uh, I can only speak of math because I'm a math teacher. Uh, but math is purely standardized assessments. So, uh, unless they're giving paper quizzes, uh, we actually take all our, uh, assessments online. Um, even the regular just comment assessments are always online. So there's really nothing to give back. I do give out scores, uh, but there's no way of sending that information, those tests home, uh, because they are online. Uh, however, teachers, they should be giving out quizzes and random, eh, exit tickets and other, uh, assessments that should be able to, uh, be given out for error analysis or for, uh, for parents to look over to help their children. So, uh, that's for math, uh, because that, that, for math, it's kind of frustrating, because I like to do error analysis, and I can't, because it's online. Uh, so I can't really, I could just tell my kids the scores, and we can't really approve upon them, um, unless I print out things, which we're not really supposed to do. Uh, so hopefully that brings a little clarification for you, um, because that's just a county, they're all kind of standardized assessments. Uh, but you should be still able to see quizzes, exit tickets, tickets, and other classworks that are graded with feedback.
Yeah, no, thank you. Now, that's just certain information I got. I just think it's problematic not to, you get it there forty percent of our grades assessment, so it's still, and it may hear from other parents too, I just think it's inconsistently being given out. I want to touch on some parents at different schools. But I, I think they're graded assessments, so not to get those back, it's still quite a challenge, right? There's no way to really, um, to give any lesson learned back on what our scholar back, right? So, um, you don't know what you got wrong. There's no way to really improve on it. Um, and also, I just think that you want to make sure that they're graded accurately, right? Make sure there wasn't a fat finger flub where someone misentered a grade. There's no way to kind of, there's no mechanism in place to even validate it, to make sure the grading's accurate, or to make sure that we even give feedback. No, no feedback loop, um, built in yet on it. um, built in yet on it. But thank you for the information.
Thanks for sharing that. And Mr. Smith, I have a question for you. I don't mean to put you on the spot, but since PCAC is not part of the interview process, I was just curious, what was your interest in applying?
Oh, thank you. Yeah, so I, I think that part of it is when I look at the Parent Advisory Committee here, so I, I think it is parent engagement. Right, to a degree, and make sure that we're informed consent and make sure, I think of certain issues that may be bringing up here is to, make sure that we're still building that bridge between the community of schools and our parents. So I think, cause I did a quick gash to see like how many schools have an active PTA or PTO, right? It's only about twenty percent or so, right? And so that, that engagement there is so necessary to make sure that, the best practice that we talk about here, that do have a mechanism in place to kind of reach the parents and the ground. So, love it, love the community work aspect.
Thank you. Thank you for sharing that.
All right, Madam Chair?
Yes, ma'am.
If I could just uh, jump in, I would like to bring a report. Uh, we, we update the um, roster of schools and their parent leadership organizations every year. And so we just got a big uh, big data set um, in October. And uh, I will talk to Ms. Shannon to make sure we can give you the most up-to-date list, because they haven't been listed correctly in a while. So we want to make sure that you all have that. So you know, especially for your districts, what's happening. And some of them are PTA, some are PTO, some are parent advisory groups. Uh, our superintendents have always said, we don't care what you call it, but you need to have a parent leadership organization in your school. So we'll make sure you get that.
Right, thank you, thank you. And if I could jump in real doc, for a hot second, Dr. Jackson, I know at the um, parent leader, um, conversation forum, you guys encouraged us to connect with our principals and bring them to the next session.
Yes, that would be so outstanding. And all of you are welcome to come to those sessions as well. Uh, because it's important that to, again, that, that partnership between our parent leaders and that principal is critical. And so we want to support that.
Awesome. Thank you, guys. Let's move to District Five, Ms. Lawrence.
Hello, everyone. Good evening. My name is Akeem Bura Lawrence, um, District Five rep. Happy, so happy to join you all. I have two scholars um, at Woodmore Elementary, a third grader and a first grader. Um, my daughter also attended another uh, uh, Friendship Aspire STEM for a, a short amount of time, um, and is now back at Woodmore. Um, I'm excited to, to get involved. Um, I think what led me to join, um, to, to beg and keep following up to see if I had, had been selected. Um, I, I was, I was noticing a lot of issues and, um, was posting in a mom's group and someone was like, well, you know, why don't you be the change that you want to see? And I strongly believe in that. Um, I'm very committed to my students uh, being in Prince George's County Public Schools. And I know there's a lot of bad perceptions. So helping to, to be the change that I want to see and change those perceptions. Um, also very active on the PTO at Woodmore and just wanting to be, uh, have deeper involvement and encourage other parents to get involved. So I would love to see like, you know, whatever the parent-led organizations are, come together, um, and meet um, occasionally. Um, when I was at Friendship Aspire, helped start the PTA there, and talked to the P, our PTA representative while my daughter was there, um, about like having some kind of group, to come together with all the different PTAs, but would love to just see that for all parent-led organizations. Um, so that we can share ideas and just, you know, come together and, and um, have a voice. Um, one of the things that at my, at Woodmore, that we're struggling with right now is the first grade classes are at about thirty students and growing. Um, and there's only two first grade classes. Um, so I have been in contact with Dr. Miller about that and um, you know, uh, quite a few other parents are starting to be like, what's going on? Why there's so many students? So that's something that we're hoping to um, get another teacher. Um, we understand it's out of our principals' hands at this time, but hoping to kind of um, to see some change in that area for Woodmore. And I'm sure there's other schools that also may have that issue. So would be interested in, in learning more about that. But again, happy to be here and um, happy to meet you all.
Thank you for sharing. I'm not gonna, don't put yourself on you yet. Hearing that you have been involved with um, starting up a PT, PTSA, um, could you share something that has been successful in your journey?
Sure. So um, I think what's, what really helped us, to be honest, um, at Friendship, um, and again, we were only there for two months, um, was uh, having the rep from the PTA and really connecting with that person. Also having parents that were really um, excited and wanting to be involved and connecting with those parents early on. Um, even when there wasn't like a formal PTA in place, um, just really, getting out and speaking to parents and talking to them and, and, and hearing what their concerns were or what their successes were, um, and just forming those types of groups. I think it's super important just to be, a voice, like not to be afraid to talk to people and hear what they have to say and connect with people. Um, because you never know what, what may come out of it. So I think um, that was what helped us to be successful.
Great, great, great. Thank you for sharing.
Sure.
All right, so I am up. I am the representative from District Six. This is my second, um, um, second year here it, with PCAC. Um, everyone who knows of me knows that I'm very passionate about our students with disabilities. So a lot of, I guess, uh, areas that I speak from is dealing around that subject area. Um, last, my last term, I was the vice chair. So I really enjoy interacting with PCAC and trying to move things forward, to better our district, our school district as a whole. Um, as far as an update, um, I, I was not present and I hate that I was not present. Unfortunately, I had a death in my family, but this past Saturday, my district member held the First Parent Institute. I think that that's what it's called. Um, and the next one is going to be held in December, on December seventh. And from my understanding, it wasn't just for District Six, other district um, leaders shared it with their districts as well. So hopefully, it was a well-received um, time for parents to come together, um, and learn about different things. If someone from PCAC attended, uh, please do share, your perception of, of the session. Um, but if anybody wants to attend next, the next session, it's, it will be held on December seventh. Ms. Barton?
Yes, I, I support uh, Board Member Brandon Jackson and I was there at the uh, parent workshop. It was uh, the Seven Habits of Highly Effective Families. Um, we had a, a fairly decent turnout. It was almost twenty-five parents there. Um, some did have their children with them. Um, but it was a very informative session and I encourage everyone to please, please participate in the next one that happens on December seventh.
Awesome. Thank you for sharing that. Mr. Fitzpatrick?
Uh, I echo both of the sentiments that have been shared. The only thing that I want to just emphasize is, to everyone watching and everyone on the, on the committee is that even if you did not attend part one, you can still attend part two. Please register, 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 because they're gearing out uh, freebies, like free books and things. And we want to make sure that, we have enough for you when you come and the workbook and whatnot. So you did not have to attend part one to attend part two. There will be a recap. And please register, register, register. Thank you.
Thank you for sharing that. Great. All right, District Seven. Um, what is happening here? D- District Seven, Ms. Millhouse?
This um, is Dolores Millhouse. I'm the Vice Chair of um, uh, Parent and Community Advisory Council. I am in my second term, first year of my second term, my last term. Um, I chaired the first um, two years of PCAC. And so I have nothing special to report out from District Seven, but welcome, everyone.
Thank you, Ms. Millhouse. District Eight, Ms. H- Ms. Hilton?
Um, good evening, everyone. So yes, Josaida Rojas Hinton. Um, I have mm, children in two different school, elementary and high school. And I think the reason for me to be here is because of IEP or Special Education. And I think I need to go with you, Mrs. Smith. I think I need to contact you tomorrow. And this is one of the main reason that I'm here. Is the, I see that it's very difficult for a parent to be here, or for a child to get help. And I think that this is why I'm here. I'm also part of a PTSA. I'm a president on a PTSA, a high school here in PG County. And I volunteer a lot of my time and I like to go to many events that happens around the community. Um, we have one on Saturday and also here and I'll be there. Thank you.
Thank you.
I got to be here. I'll see you there.
Great, great, great. All right, um, District Nine, Ms. Davis. I know you had some mic issues initially. Are you, are you, are you good to go now? Did we lose Ms. Davis?
I know, I can see her.
Okay, all right. So um, I think that wraps up the districts. Do we have any representation this evening from our board? I don't think so. Okay, so two things bef- before I move to the next agenda item, I would encourage you all to,
I'm sorry, Chair, we didn't do the community members?
Oh.
We have civic engagement, we have the union, we have Faith Based Now in Business.
Thank you so much, Vice Chair Millhouse. So I need to go back to my list at the top. So um, Labor Representative, Ms. Brown, would you like to introduce yourself?
Yes, good evening. I am Rebecca Brown. I am the PGCEA Union Rep for PCAC. I teach at Martin Luther King Junior Middle School, um, eighth grade math. So I'm, I'm, love to be a part of this. I get to hear the perspective of parents, um, and kind of help out when I can, when I, when I can. So welcome, everybody, and thank you for being here.
Thank you. Business Representative, Ms. Holden? Oh, you know, I don't think she's present. Is that correct, Ms. Barton?
She was here. She, she, but she left. She was here earlier.
Okay. All right, Faith Base, Dr. Huggins or Higgins? Please correct me.
It's Huggins.
Huggins, thank you.
Good evening, everyone. I do apologize for being late. I had a difficult time getting on and finding the link. Um, so ignore those emails I sent to everybody, uh, especially Ms. Barton that says, where's the link? But um, I'm Evelina Huggins and um, I have two scholars at Panorama Elementary School. Um, I am not a biological parent. These children have been placed in my care by the Department of Social Services, and I serve as their court-appointed legal guardian. And um, I've been challenged by some of the, um, care and concern that they receive from the schools, um, including IEP request. And it wasn't until I decided I was going to take it to the next level because it's a federal requirement that I got it, my scholar is doing ex, she failed kindergarten. Um, she's never been socialized, lived in a car under Iverson Mall. So she didn't focus on school, but, connecting with the other kids because she had no connection. And so um, helping the school to understand that some of our children come from, um, diverse backgrounds and they all just don't fit in a mold. So that's been a challenge. Um, I'm a volunteer. I attend almost every activity that Panorama Elementary School has for the children. And I really want to advocate for persons who have foster children, are legal guardians, grandmothers who have, their grandchildren and find it difficult to get kinship care and no one advocating for them. Um, and so I've kind of become the, the voice of anyone who says, you know, I'm struggling with this. I'll walk them through the whole process. Um, I went through the um, DSS uh, Kinship Care Forum that they had at PG College, and I was able to connect with some, some grandparents and just kind of help them navigate, um, the system. Um, and all they want to do is care for the children. So I'm here for, for that reason. As the Faith Base Representative and ki- I kind of feel that I have a superintendent that I can connect to, um, for all of the kids across Prince George's County. He's the great big superintendent. I don't know what your higher power is. But for me, connecting to that superintendent helps to all of us do our jobs um, a little bit, better. I'm going to sit back, I'm going to learn as much as I can learn before I, I chime in. But I'm really happy, um, to be a part. I am also on the County Executive's Local Development Council, overseeing the monies from MGM, um, casino going back into the community. So anything community-related, um, I'm, I'm around to, to do that. So I thank you for allowing me to be a part of this, uh, process and I'm here to do whatever I can do to assist wherever I can assist.
So Dr. Huggins, please roll your sleeves up. You do not have to sit back. We are a team. Feel free to all, you know, whenever you want to jump in, feel free to do so. Uh, because yeah, we're all here to work. So we, we receive you, um, your knowledge, your expertise. I'm sure it can be utilized. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Mm-hmm. And then Ms. Lundee, last but not least.
Hi, thank you, Madam Chair. Welcome, everyone. Um, so I don't have anything to report out on. Um, I already stated some of my issues and concerns and how I can help. Um, but I am looking forward to attending the uh, Family Institute Conference, where I can um, connect with our parent leaders, legislators, stakeholders, um, board members, just to have a, a in-depth or just a conversation with them, uh, and just to introduce myself. Um, so I did have a question. Um, is anyone opposed to uh, Ms. Barton? I know we have each other's email addresses, but for my area of civic and community, I would love to have the point of contact information for my fellow colleagues here on the council, um, like phone numbers. So I don't know if anyone's opposed to that. Um, since we don't have a chat or anything like that right now. Um, because in my role, it's, I see it as very broad and diverse right now until I have my conversation with the Chair and Vice Chair. Um, but yeah, I would love to be able to reach out to the different district uh, members, and the faith, and the faith in business and union person who are part of this council. Um, I'm, uh, one of my things, because I am in my second term, I was a part, I was under the um, Ms. Millhouse as the Chair and we did great work there. So I'm, I'm just honored to be privileged to be able to continue the work as being a part of PCAC. And so the word that comes to mind on this, on this um, term is becoming a bridge. Because I was becoming a bridge for parents and the board. It's, and also with respect to being in advisory coun, advisory capacity as well. So that's, you know, that's all I have to say. And I want to welcome all of our new members. It's good to see everyone and you have a great team here and just looking forward to working with everyone. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Um, to, to the request that you have about contact information, if anybody opposes that, please let me know. Otherwise, I'll work uh, with Ms. Barton to, to get information distributed. Ms. Millhouse?
Yeah, um, Ms. Barton already has like a, a list that she updates that provides, everyone's contact information for the committee. But I, I want to add something, um, from the last meeting that Ms. Lundee made a suggestion about adding the pictures, of the elected official to the legislative toolkit. And um, I, I want to just share and state, Ms. Lundee, based on that recommendation that we also shared during our, um, executive meeting with the Superintendent and um, Chief Boyd, that when you look at the toolkit, you'll see that um, some of your suggestions were added to that. And so that, that is the um, power and the impact of this group, um, and the role to advise the board and to advise administration that we provide um, insight from the perspective outside of the school system, to give them a different perspective on something that could be very useful, especially to, the layperson who may not be used to navigating in the political space and engaging with individuals, um, that they may know by name, but not know by face. So um, So um, i- it is really important for the engagement to happen and for all of the new members that have come on board. It is critical that you reach out to your board members. Um, and work with them very closely because that's how you begin to bridge. The gap and build community with the parents and community members of your district.
Ms. Millhouse, are you over here reading my notes?
No, but I'm, I'm trying to be very present for you. You know, I'm.
I know.
About seventy-five percent.
Yes, yes, yes. And, and that's what I really wanted to wrap up with, that. We, we've all got to know each other in this brief moment. But your role now i- is to go beyond P C A, connect with your board members. Connect with individuals within your district so that you can be that voice. To advocate about whether it's concerns or even good news. Um, I know we all share, you know, different areas that we like to focus on, but we are representatives from. The district as a whole. So I just wanted to put that out there to you all. Alright, so the next discussion item is one that we have been waiting to get to. And that is the election for Recording Secus- Secretary. So I'm hearing that we have some experts. I hear that people are pumped up to be on P C A, so we can use your help. I would like to know, is there anyone willing to step in the position for Re- Recording Secretary? And don't all speak at once.
Chair Smith, is this something that can be, like, can we, uh, cuz I've, I've listened in on the meetings before and I've heard you all make this request several times. And unfortunately, you know, no one's raised their hand and I get it. Um, however, is this something that can be sh- a shared responsibility? Um, I know for our P T O, which is, I know this is not the same, but we have two secretaries because. It could, you know, with everything else going on in people's lives, sometimes they just need to kind of transition that responsibility sometimes. So is that? I don't know if that's allowed or if that's something to consider having two.
Ms. Fitzpatrick, can I defer to you here? Are we allowed to have two different individuals in that role?
Uh, the short answer is I don't know. What we can do right now is if we have two people who are interested in their shared role. We can uh, name one and have one as a backup and I can get a concrete answer um, before the next meeting, if that works.
And can I add, um, that, that our bylaws does not. Identify how many individuals in the role. It just identifies the role. Um, and so right now, I am Vice Chair and I am Recording Secretary. And, and so, um, I, I get and understand the acts and, and people. Wanting to um, maybe split the role. It is not a heavy lift. But it's a lift that needs to happen. Um, and, and thank you, Mr. Fitzpatrick, for the guidance and making sure that we understand that we don't need to sit here and do dictation. And write down everything everyone says, you know, so yeah, if you notice the less meeting minutes that came through. They are very high-level and to the point. And so, um. You know, we, we, we are in this position as volunteers and we understand that people have raised their hands. Um, to be on this committee and this committee is work. It's not just coming to these meetings and just sitting and listening to reports. But it is work and the bulk of the work happens with the Executive Committee. And so, um, we do have additional meetings that we have to have. Um, we do have additional requests that come through. So um, the act is easy. Um, yes, we are asking that individuals look at your capacity, but um, we really need people to step up.
Thank you for sharing that. Ms. Wilson?
Yes, ma'am. Um, Madam Chair, I would be willing to uh, volunteer now that I know that I'll be on. Um, I did kind of express that I was trying to find out, um, you know, some information before. Um, before I did try to jump out there. I didn't wanna put us in a precarious situation. Um, but now that I have complete uh, clarity, um, I would be willing to uh, to do that. I would still say if we can get a backup as well, that would be fantastic.
Thank you so much. I, I do, I do sincerely appreciate you stepping up for this role.
Can I add that the Executive Committee, we are each other's backup?
We are, we really are.
And so, right now. You know, I'm Vice Chair, so I'm, I'm, I'm doing the role. So if some reason, for some reason. Whoever is sitting in the role as Secretary cannot make it for that day. Don't think that we are saying that you still gotta do meeting meetings. You can't, you cannot do the meeting minutes if you're not present at the meeting, right? And so, the three of us are the backup. Is, it, it really is as simple as that. We, we are the backup.
Thank you, Ms. Millhouse.
And I'm sorry, excuse me, I'm just gonna say I'm happy to also serve, you know, as, I know. You all are each other's backup, but happy to also serve as uh, Ms. Wilson's backup if needed as well.
Great, great. This is music to my ears tonight. So thank you all for willing, your willingness to serve um, in this capacity. It would really help. You know, not that we were delayed in anything that we were doing, cuz as Ms. Millhouse said, we are each other's backup, but it would really help. Um, considering the number of items that, that we are committed to as being a part of this council. Alright, are there any follow-up items?
Well, do we need to vote? Don't we, don't we need to take a vote?
Oh, that's right.
We gotta vote. We, we, we need to take a nomination from the floor and then based on the nominations, we need to go and to vote. Cuz if not, I'm, I'm still the Recording Secretary at the next meeting.
Ms. Millhouse keeps me in order.
I make a motion, uh, Madam Chair. Make a motion to um, recommend um. Ms. Latanya, Latanja Wilson as our Recording Secretary. And also um, Ms. Lawrence Akeem Meepo, I almost wanna tear up your name. How you pronounce your name?
Akeembra, thank you for having me.
Thank you, sweetheart. Akeembra Lawrence as a, as a backup. Um, to be a Recording Secretary. Carlotta Lundee, I make that motion. Is there a second?
I second that motion. All in favor?
I just have a point of clarification. Mr. Fitzpatrick?
Uh, I'm just going to make sure that the Chair carries the motion.
Oh, okay.
So there was a, there was a motion made by Ms. Lundee. Um, Ms. Smith will ask for a second and then carry the motion.
I didn't hear any days, so that's why I just went forward. So it has been. My apologies, Madam Chair. I wasn't doing it on purpose, you know. No, I understand. It has been properly moved by Ms. Lundee that Ms. Wilson is the Recording Secretary. And Ms. Lawrence is the backup for the Recording Secretary. It was seconded by Ms. Brown. Are there any questions?
Yes, um, I, I have a point of clarification because if the bylaws at this point. Don't specify a backup. Um. Does the nomination really just need to focus on? Who has um, motion or did a, a, a floor self-nomination? For that role, because at this point, we don't have a backup as outlined in the bylaws. Um, but that does give us opportunity cuz we need to update the bylaws. So we can make those changes and then come back. Mr. Fitzpatrick, please um, make sure. Question. Somebody unmuted? Is somebody? Um, I, I just wanna make sure that as we're moving to motion for. The role, that as we're talking about backup, um, the bylaws do not cover or um, speak to a backup. So that may be something that has to be um, postponed at this time as it relates to a backup.
Mr. Fitzpatrick, do you have any comment there?
I don't, um, again, I don't have the bylaws in front of me and I'm not sure if it's prohibitive. I think what can happen, which is the safest thing to happen, is to carry the motion with Ms. Wilson. With the group understanding that you have a person who is volunteer if Ms. Wilson is not here. You don't have to have a, um. Like a pro temp, if you would. You know who the person is as an understanding, as a norm. That's the safest thing, but I can, I can still get back to you if necessary.
Okay, well, Madam Chair, I can um, resent my original motion and I can restate the motion. To um, make a motion to nominate um, Ms. Wilson to serve as the Recording Secretary for P C A.
Madam Chair.
It has been properly moved that Ms. Wilson serves as the Recording Secretary for P C A. Is there a second?
Second.
Alright, let's take the vote. Ms., Ms. Barton, can you take the vote for me?
Yes. One moment. Marsha Erden? Ms. Latanza Wilson?
Aye.
Mr. Christopher Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Akeembra Lawrence?
Aye.
I'm sorry, Mr. Teresa Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Dolores Millhouse?
Aye.
Ms. Josaida Hinton?
Aye.
Ms. Shadé Davis? Dr. Sheila Jackson?
Aye.
Ms. Robin Welsh?
Aye.
Ms. Carlotta Lundee?
Ms. Barton, I vote aye.
Ms. Rebecca Brown?
Aye.
Dr. Evelina Huggins?
Aye.
Uh, Ms. Sharice Holden? She's not here. I believe that's everyone.
Thank you. The motion carries. Alright, the next item um, is next steps. The only item I have here is that our next meeting will be held on Wednesday, November sixth, twenty twenty-four. At seven P M. via Zoom. So I wanna thank you all for a great meeting this evening.
Chair Smith, sorry, today is November sixth.
You are absolutely right.
It's been that, I understand. It's been that kind of week.
Oh, goodness. So let me restate this. The next meeting date will be on December fourth, twenty twenty-four at seven P M. via Zoom. Thank you. Um, this was a great meeting, everyone. May I have a motion to adjourn? So moved. Thank you. All in favor? Thank you all. I hope you guys have a wonderful night.
Alright, good night, everyone. Welcome. God bless y'all. Take care.
The same to you. Bye-bye. Good night.
Thank, good night.